Today is April 10, 2025. Welcome to tonight's Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education. I'd like to open tonight's meeting and I'd also like to get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing tenures, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons and privileged information with counsel.
So moved Tibbetts.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're now in executive session.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. At this time I'd like to return to open session and if we can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I don't think we have any modifications for tonight, right? All right, 4.3, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved, Tibbetts.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. 5.1, upcoming events. On Monday, April 14th through Monday, April 21st, spring recess. No school, all schools' offices closed, 418 only. You have to work. Monday, April 21st, new board member petitions due by 5:00 PM on that day. Applications for absentee or early mail vote ballots are accepted starting on the 21st. And applications have to be, or petitions have to be there at district office, 11 Boyce Road in Hyde Park. And their special hours for that day will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then on Tuesday, April 22nd, is a regular board meeting along with the BOSI's vote. So that'll be a Tuesday meeting at district office and open session begins at 7:00 PM. Any other events? Okay, moving on to 6.1, Pride.
Hello, everybody. So just to begin with some Pride, at North Park, we had fourth grade students who hosted Ridgefield Playhouse and to see a live theatrical performance of Charlotte's Web after they had read Charlotte's Web. They also received treats from Stu Leonard. Also, Principal DeLassandro would like to thank the fourth grade team of teachers in the Ridgefield Playhouse for their generosity and hospitality, as well as the parents and guardians who chaperoned the trip. The students represented North Park and the HBCSD in such a positive way and she's really beyond proud of them. At Netherwood, students participated in a career fair with their school counselor. Ms. Minasso coordinated and there was 14 parents and members of their community that shared their careers with their stu-, with the students and it was an opportunity for the students to ask questions and get a better understanding of various career opportunities from nursing to engineering to photography and executive chef. So it was a great opportunity for the kids to really, you know, get an idea of careers. So here we have some pictures from Ralph R. Smith and from Violet Avenue. At Ralph R. Smith, there was a monthly PBIS assembly. There was also third grade students who shared some ideas and talents with the whole school. In the pictures, you can see students in Ms. Mix and Ms. Accuri and Stevens classes that are wrapping up their National Reading Month in the library with a trip to the library cafe. They're exploring genres by sampling several different genre tables during their library class and offering like mystery, fantasy, fairy tale retelling and realistic fiction. So those are just some pictures and on the bottom from Ralph R. Smith of those students. Ralph R. Smith is also participating in the Spring Spirit Week. And then at Violet Avenue, in the top pictures, you can see some of our own FDR, NHS members who participated in their community project. They visited Ms. Silva's second grade class and Ms. Kelly's third grade class. And during their visit, they read The Giving Tree and discussed the significance of being a part of NHS. They also talked about the concepts of kindness, integrity and empathy. So just to see a little bit of how our community gets involved and how our schools kind of all end up mixing up. Also, the third grade classes had their Red Trunk Gallery Walk this past Wednesday. The students have learned so much about Oaxaca, Mejico. During the gallery walk, they displayed an artifact from their own home culture along with some writing that they did on the artifacts representing, as well as how it was similar and different from the Oaxaca culture. There was also VAS fifth grade classes who completed their Spring Community Service Project with the help of VAS parents, students and staff. And fifth graders were able to stuff over 300 Easter goodie bags and over 300 plastic eggs with toys and candies for the residents of the Sparrow's Nest, 501(c)(5) charity organization. The organization supports families facing cancer diagnosis and the VAS fifth grade would like to thank everyone for their support. Also, at Violet Avenue, Ms. Ellis's ENL students finished their March Writing Challenge. Those that read For March Madness and completed their writing challenge received a coupon for a very, for a free Dairy Queen ice cream. So thank you to our Hyde Park Dairy Queen for donating the coupons. Classroom teachers were also given one to hand out to one of their March Madness readers as well. So that's just what's happening at the elementary schools right now. At Havlin, I myself did not get to see the play, but I know a couple of my friends did. But I hear that it was a great show. From the moment that the curtain rose, students lit up the stage with their acting, dancing and singing, and each moment meant more delightful than the last. Principal Shaw would like to just express how there was so much passion and heart work and end to every detail. And a huge shout out to the amazing stage crew and the seamless behind the scenes magic that made everything run so beautifully. And also a great thing to the wonderful parents and families. Thank you for your unwavering support of the theater program. Your encouragement helps create experiences for the students that will cherish, that they will cherish forever. And of course, a standing ovation for Ms. Bodak and the visionary Drama Club Director and Ms. Madonna, whose musical direction brought everything to life. Your dedication and creativity and love for the arts inspires all. So it's a great way to see how our staff and our teachers and everybody is here to support the kids and then, you know, in every event that they host. And then finally, at FDR, Mr. Ruela would like to give a shout out to the senior class for hosting a great Mr. President show. As you all know, I mentioned Mr. President last time and just to see, you know, how great our class really was able to pull off that show in such a short time. And now our auditorium is, is gone. But, and then he would also like to give a shout out to the junior class for fantastic junior prom. And that's all for Pride. And then here's some pictures from prom if you missed it. And that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. I think, who's next, Jessica?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We're excited to once again celebrate our students and employee, members of our community at large who exemplify our attributes of our Portrait of a Learner and Portrait of an Employee, which include being a confident learner, responsible citizen, critical thinker, thinker, adaptable innovator, effective and effective communicator. Tonight, we are honoring two individuals and I ask Principal Ruela to share some details.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start off just with a portrait of our, again, our Hyde Park learner. And I'm going to ask Tavoris Perilla, can you come on up? So Tavoris Perilla Rosaire exhibits several attributes of our Portrait of a Learner. He currently serves as the Vice President of the Triem Music Honor Society and has demonstrated outstanding leadership as the section leader for the cello section throughout all four years of his high school career. Tavoris has played a key role in several notable performances, including performing the National Anthem at our opening day events and at FDR basketball games. He has also spread holiday cheer by playing Christmas carols in the lobby before winter break and has been a dedicated performer at the Black History Month celebration for the past two years. He is a beacon of positivity, consistently arriving each day with a smile and often lightening the atmosphere with a humorous joke. His leadership and collaborative spirit are evident in everything he does. His passion for music is infectious, inspiring those around him through his performances. Whether helping others within this, his section or guiding his peers through challenging music passages, Tavoris approaches each situation with encouragement and enthusiasm. Always eager to take on new challenges, he is just excited to play with fellow musicians for the joy of it as he is to excel in more formal settings. And now we're going to move on to our Portrait of a Hyde Park employee. Mr. Curtio, can you join us? So Mr. Curtio is an exceptional individual that goes above and beyond for his students and the FDR community. He consistently demonstrates
At district office and open session begins at 7:00 PM. Any other events? Okay, moving on to 6.1 Pride.
Hello, everybody. So just to begin with some Pride at North Park, we had 4th grade students who hosted Ridgefield Playhouse and to see a live theatrical performance of Charlotte's Web after they had read Charlotte's Web. They also received treats from Stu Leonard. Also, Principal De La Sandro would like to thank the 4th grade team of teachers in the Ridgefield Playhouse for their generosity and hospitality, as well as the parents and guardians who chaperoned the trip. The students represented North Park and the HPCSD in such a positive way, and she's really beyond proud of them. At Netherwood, students participated in a career fair with their school counselor. Ms. Minazzo coordinated, and there was 14 parents and members of their community that shared their careers with the students, and it was an opportunity for the students to ask questions and get a better understanding of various career opportunities, from nursing to engineering to photography and executive chef. So it was a great opportunity for the kids to really, you know, get an idea of careers. So here we have some pictures from Ralph R. Smith and from Violet Avenue. At Ralph R. Smith, there was a monthly PBIS assembly. There was also 3rd grade students who shared some ideas and talents with the whole school. In the pictures, you can see students in Ms. Mix and Ms. Accuri and Stevens classes that are wrapping up their National Reading Month in the library with a trip to the Library Cafe. They're exploring genres by sampling several different genre tables during their library class and offering, like mystery, fantasy, fairy tale retelling, and realistic fiction. So those are just some pictures. And on the bottom, from Ralph R. Smith of those students. Ralph R. Smith is also participating in the Spring Spirit Week. And then at Violet Avenue, in the top pictures, you can see some of our own FDR NHS members who participated in their community project. They visited Ms. Silva's 2nd grade class and Ms. Kelly's 3rd grade class, and during their visit, they read The Giving Tree and discussed the significance of being a part of NHS. They also talked about the concepts of kindness, integrity, and empathy. So just to see a little bit of how our community gets involved and how our schools kind of all end up mixing up. Also, the 3rd grade classes had their Red Trunk Gallery Walk this past Wednesday. The students have learned so much about Oaxaca Mehico. During the gallery walk, they displayed an artifact from their own home culture, along with some writing that they did on the artifacts representing, as well as how it was similar and different from the Oaxaca culture. There was also VAS 5th grade classes who completed their Spring Community Service Project with the help of VAS parents, students, and staff. And 5th graders were able to stuff over 300 Easter goodie bags and over 300 plastic eggs with toys and candies for the resurgence of the Sparrow's Nest, 501(c)() charity organization. The organization supports families facing cancer diagnosis, and the VAS 5th grade would like to thank everyone for their support. Also, at Violet Avenue, Ms. Ellis's ENL students finished their March Writing Challenge. Those that read For March Madness and completed their writing challenge received a coupon for a free Dairy Queen ice cream. So thank you to our High Park Dairy Queen for donating the coupons. Classroom teachers were also given one to hand out to one of their March Madness readers as well. So that's just what's happening at the elementary schools right now. At Havlin, I myself did not get to see the play, but I know a couple of my friends did. But I hear that it was a great show. From the moment that the curtain rose, students lit up the stage with their acting, dancing, and singing, and each moment meant more delightful than the last. Principal Shaw would like to just express how there was so much passion and heart work and end to every detail. And a huge shout out to the amazing stage crew and the seamless behind-the-scenes magic that made everything run so beautifully. And also, a great thing to the wonderful parents and families. Thank you for your unwavering support of the theater program. Your encouragement helps create experiences for the students that they will cherish forever. And of course, a standing ovation for Ms. Bodak and the visionary Drama Club Director and Ms. Cordana, whose musical direction brought everything to life. Your dedication and creativity and love for the arts inspires all. So it's a great way to see how our staff and our teachers and everybody is here to support the kids in every event that they host. And then finally, at FDR, Mr. Ruela would like to give a shout out to the senior class for hosting a great Mr. President show. As you all know, I mentioned Mr. President last time. And just to see, you know, how great our class really was able to pull off that show in such a short time. And now our auditorium is gone. But, and then he would also like to give a shout out to the junior class for fantastic junior prom. And that's all for Pride. And then here's some pictures from prom if you missed it. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. I think who's next? Jessica?
Good evening, everyone. We're excited to once again celebrate our students and employee, members of our community at large, who exemplify our attributes of our Portrait of a Learner and Portrait of Employee, which include being a confident learner, responsible citizen, critical thinker, adaptable innovator, effective communicator. Tonight, we are honoring two individuals, and I ask Principal Ruela to share some details.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start off just with a portrait of our, again, our High Park learner. And I'm going to ask Tavoris Perilla, can you come on up? So Tavoris Perilla Rosier exhibits several attributes of our Portrait of a Learner. He currently serves as the Vice President of the Triem Music Honor Society and has demonstrated outstanding leadership as the section leader for the cello section throughout all four years of his high school career. Tavoris has played a key role in several notable performances, including performing the National Anthem at our opening day events and at FDR basketball games. He has also spread holiday cheer by playing Christmas carols in the lobby before winter break and has been a dedicated performer at the Black History Month Celebration for the past two years. He is a beacon of positivity, consistently arriving each day with a smile and often lightening the atmosphere with a humorous joke. His leadership and collaborative spirit are evident in everything he does. His passion for music is infectious, inspiring those around him through his performances. Whether helping others within his section or guiding his peers through challenging music passages, Tavoris approaches each situation with encouragement and enthusiasm. Always eager to take on new challenges, he is just as excited to play with fellow musicians for the joy of it as he is to excel in more formal settings. And now, we're going to move on to our Portrait of a High Park Employee. Mr. Curtio, can you join us? So Mr. Curtio is an exceptional individual that goes above and beyond for his students and the FDR community. He consistently demonstrates the ability to effectively communicate, not only by calling home, but by listening to the needs of his students and supporting them in their academic adventure. He embodies the characteristics of a responsible citizen through his honesty and his integrity. He seeks to instill confidence in his students and provide them with the critical thinking and confidence that they need to be responsible citizens themselves. Mr. Curtio consistently shows the FDR community that he is an asset, not only through his academic instruction, but as a moral compass for those that enter the doors each and every day. And I could just say, knowing Mr. Curtio for some time, he's just an exceptional individual. And I also have to congratulate Mrs. Curtio as well.
Do we have any more Pride?
So I just wanted to add just a couple of things. First of all, I was very impressed with the World Language posters. I thought that that was something that was very innovative, and I thought the students got a lot out of it. If you haven't seen those, they're on the website. The junior prom was excellent. It was well-run. I speak as a parent for our daughter and so forth, so she had a great time. She hasn't, she really hasn't shut up about it. She said how much fun she's had, and that was fantastic. And of course, it's probably going to be mentioned later, but this is National Assistant Principals Week. So we wanted to thank our assistant principals. You see in the house tonight is Mr. Cowan and Ms. Moy. It's a 24/7 job. We have a lot of assistant principals in the district besides those two, but they're exemplary. This year, I've been filling in as an assistant principal after I retired and so forth. And it gave me a new reflection on how involved the job is. It's 24/7, and it's drop anything you're doing and just make sure you're helping students. So again, thank you and congratulations on National Assistant Principals Week.
Could I add something? I was waiting to hear about it, but since Liz does Pride, and she had something pretty monumental happen this week, I wanted to talk about, I don't know if anybody else is going to do it, but I had the privilege of going to the Seal of Biliteracy presentations earlier in the week. It was just amazing, and Liz presented. For the first time in my life, I sat in a room and listened to students, and I had no idea what they were saying because it was another language that I don't speak. It was so impressive that there was a panel of judges, and each FDR student who was pursuing this honor did a presentation all in another language. The panel then asked them questions. The judges asked questions in that language, and the students had to respond. And I kept trying to catch little words here and there and figure out what they were saying. And it was amazing. I mean, most of us struggle with one language. And the fact that you were able to master two languages is so impressive. Your presentation was beautiful. It was emotional. I could understand the feelings of it. So it was just really great. And I, congratulations to you and to all the other seniors who presented. And Monica Contreras did a great job organizing it. It was just was, it was really special. So thank you and congratulations, Liz. You did a great job.
Okay, any more Pride? Okay, moving on to 7.1, our superintendent's report.
So good evening, everyone. I actually was going to speak to the Assistant Principal, National Assistant Principal Week. I'll continue to do that. Mr. Spence beat me to it. So I have a couple of words that I want to share because this is such a critical role in our district. We're sending a big dose of appreciation for this week to celebrate our amazing assistant principals. It's National Assistant Principal Week, and we want to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Moy, Mr. Cowan, Mrs. Wise, and also Mr. Paul Faziola, who's in one of our elementary schools at North Park. So much of their fantastic work happens behind the scenes, making sure our daily operations run smooth to offer invaluable support to our principals, our students, our staff. They are truly essential in contributing to the overall success of our schools and in fostering a positive and inclusive environment where everyone can thrive. And so I want to congratulate those individuals and also would be remiss to not include our high or middle school principals, Mrs. Una Miller and Mrs. Walton Henry as well. So congratulations to you all. You guys all deserve recognition for the work you guys do each and every day. In terms of academic support or academic achievements, excuse me, I do want to recognize our top 20, or excuse me, our top 20 Class of 2025 students here at FDR. So I do want to apologize. They're typically here joining us during this event. And so unfortunately, there was some miscommunication, but we are going to take a moment to recognize each of the individuals. And we're also going to be inviting them to receive their recognition and their flowers that they've earned at our subsequent board meeting. So I do want to recognize the following students. As you know, these students are the top 20, which means they have achieved some remarkable milestones. We're talking about academic achievement across the board. So I want to start off with Julian Pritchard, Jason Yang, Thomas Hurley, Isabella Breen, Tony Ho, Colton Palmetiere, Teagan Rigada, Chase Figueroa, Hannah Senical, Jake Florin, Jesse Sozi, Amir Sahoney, Ashlyn Wilk, Ireland Fitzgerald, Tyler Nolan, Alexander Jakar, Alice Chen, Jalen Nieves, Maya Mulcarney, and Elijah Hokabin Leon. So congratulations to them all. Let's give them a round of applause. And that concludes my items for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our FDR update with Mr. Ruela.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to first start by saying it's an honor and privilege to serve as the principal of FDR High School. Thank you to the board, Dr. Roman, Ms. Turner, Mrs. Lawson, and Ms. Steinberg, along with all of the district employees that work so hard to allow our buildings to open on a daily basis and support everything we do here at FDR day in and day out. With your commitment and with your dedication, it allows us to come in and do what we do each day here. We've already had recognition, but I have to do it myself. I have to say thank you to our assistant principals here at FDR High School, Mr. Cowan, Ms. Moy, and Ms. Wise. For certain, I wouldn't be able to operate without their support. They are just a great group of individuals that truly care about each and every individual student, staff member in this building. Just all around, again, I wouldn't be able to do what they, anything without them, really. Also, I have to give a huge shout out to our PTSA. We have an outstanding PTSA that supports our students and our staff. I can't say enough about how much they do. You'll hear a little bit more about some things that our PTSA is organizing in the upcoming month or two. You know, so I'll leave that a little bit for later. So I'd like to start off by acknowledging two programs that we have here at FDR. The first program that you'll hear about is new to us. We ran a pilot program last year, and this year, we have entered Year One of implementation. And our second program has been around for several years and has proven to be extremely valuable to our students and staff. So with that being said, I would like to invite Maya Villa, one of the founders of Aim High here at FDR, Imran Kalembe, and then we also have Francis Sekyama, Shadé James, and Gable Bennett. Also with them, along with Mr. Sherman Brown and Ms. Myra Fantasi. So I'll ask Imran and Maya, come on up, guys.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Maya Villa. I'm one of the founders of Aim High. Aim High is a program for college readiness to help students better their education. And it's also a leadership program to help kids with their leadership skills. Aim High started because there was a Big Brothers Club last year, and my friends and I were like, why isn't there one for the girls? We brought that idea to Mr. Ruela, and he introduced us to Mr. Sherman Brown. And then that's how it started. And I don't know, Aim High means a lot to me. Now, Imran's going to speak. He's more of like the leader of like the boys' side. I don't know, you're going to hear him speak. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and respected educators. My name is Imran Kalembe, and I'm in 10th grade. Aim High is a community where it brings together alumni, alumni, industry professionals, and staff to help educate students and bring them together in a more inclusive environment. Aim High to me is all about unity. As soon as I came here, I didn't know what to expect. It's been a positive experience for me where I was able to grow on a deeper level, and I could see that my leadership skills has grown with the time that I've been with them. Something I've learned is that if I have a goal, that I have to fight for it. So I want to become an aerospace engineer. And I spoke that to Sherman Brown. He said, what have I done so far to achieve that goal? I told him, so far, nothing. He told me, he gave me steps that I should take to reach my goal. Right now, I've reached out to around 10 college students in mechanical engineering and aerospace engineering, and I've learned a lot of valuable lessons. Aim High teaches men to, Aim High teaches men to have ambitions, inspirations, and motivations, that their attitudes and actions can transform our nation. Aim High builds competence, confidence, and character, allowing us to walk with integrity and return with honor, showing us how to be engaged, educated, and empowered. People, making sure people know we live life by distinction, moving forward together with nobody left behind. Thank you.
So we just want to thank High Park for allowing Aim High to be in this setting. And these young people that you see here are the spark that's going to ignite the fire. We're looking forward to having great results, indulging ourselves greater with the school community, and as you see them, know that they will forever aim high. Aim High!
Yeah!
Aim High!
Yeah!
Aim High!
Yeah!
So again, I'd just like to thank all of our members of Aim High. Outstanding job, and we really truly do just expect great things from the program. You know, this year, it's already done great things, but we're just expecting a lot out of the program, and we're excited to have it here. We're excited for it to continue to be a part of FDR. At this time, I would like to welcome Morendi Lopez and Anthony Nejwat to the podium to speak about our Avid program. Come on up, guys.
Hello, everyone. My name is Morendi Lopez.
And my name is Anthony Nejwat.
And we've both been in Avid since 6th grade, and now we will both also be graduating early from high school. To me, the Avid program has granted students the opportunity to reach for higher goals and also hopefully accomplish them in the future with continuous encouragement and also developing skills with the help of our teachers and counselors, as well as our principal. Avid has been very useful throughout my high school year, as well as my middle school year, granting me the opportunity to reach for higher goals.
The Avid program is a class that prepares students for college. You focus on college readiness, studying skills, organization, and it offers help with your classes. You do a lot of college-related skills that will help you out in the future, like note-taking and leadership skills.
We also do public speaking, a lot of activities, like presentations, talking about what college we want to go to. So public speaking has also been a great part, like a huge part of Avid.
Avid has supported me and other students this year by keeping us organized, staying on time, keeping college and keeping me college-ready. Avid has put me in a good spot in terms of college by helping me apply to colleges, writing my college essay, and applying to scholarships. I also found visiting colleges has helped me a lot. And being able to see college campuses, what it's like, how much certain classes matter, and what it feels like to be on a college campus has changed my perspective a lot over the years.
From the six years I've been in Avid, we have learned how to take good college-level notes to help us understand the topics in our classes more in depth. We also have learned how to execute TRFs, which also helps us understand topics in which we are confused in, making the subject more efficient to tackle. Public speaking, like I said before, has been a big part of Avid, making students get ready for the real world and also hopefully use these skills for their future careers.
So the skills that I've learned, they apply to me for like everyday use in school and out of school. Once again, Avid teaches us like note-taking skills, organization, leadership, communication, and how to set an example for others. Overall, I've seen a lot of improvement over the last few years, and I like to say Avid played a huge role in my growth as a student and as a person.
I have come to use these useful skills in my honors, AP, and college-level courses, making my work projects and activities easier to complete more diligently. Avid has been a big part of my life because of how much it has helped me, supported me. I definitely gained a lot of support from this program, especially when it came to my decision to want to graduate early.
To really go off of that, Avid teachers have, you know, they're very supportive. They help you a lot with college-related things. So you'll focus, they help you focus on what you're doing in class and in college. And to go off of what Morendi said, TRFs, it's an assignment you do in class in a group, and it's where you, you and your group, you find something that you're having trouble with in class, and you and your group work together to help you solve the problem without directly answering it. And it helps you with like critical thinking skills, communication. And I think it was, it helped me a lot during my time at Avid, and I think that's helped me develop more academically. And I think that it was very useful.
Do you guys have any questions for us? Do you guys have any questions for us?
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment for you and you all that spoke. I work at a major corporation with professionals, and I, a lot of people I work with can't do what you just did, get up in a room and do that. So you did a great job, and it does prepare you for the future, so good job. And likewise with you guys.
When I spoke to them earlier, I thought it was gonna be a tough act to follow, and I said I probably should've went first. But I also have to give a shout-out to Ms. Jarvis and also Mr. Pelkey too, as our, part of our Avid elective teachers, and I think they were a little too humble to say it, but our Avid cohort this year has a 100% acceptance rate into college, and they earned merit scholarships between $1.5 and $2 million among the class. So just exceptional all around, so great job, guys. So with that being said, unfortunately, everybody, you're stuck with me for the rest of the presentation. So we're gonna move on to graduation rates. So just to speak a little bit about this slide, what we have here is eight years of graduation rates, which you can see have all been above 80% for, again, for the past eight years here at FDR High School. You can see last year's graduation rate was 81%. Now, to give you a little bit of perspective, New York State's graduation rate as a whole was, on average, 86%. Within Dutchess County, it was an average of 86%. It ranged though from 55% to up to 95%, again, within Dutchess County. So just to give you a little sense of what that 81 means, a little bit of a dip from last year, I'll talk about that in a second, give you the reasoning behind that. I would like to note though that our five-year graduation rate, so you know, we focus, this is our four-year graduation rate, and that's predominantly what the state does look at. But for us here at FDR, we still focus on our five-year and our six-year, you know, even if we don't make it within that four years, we move on and we say, okay, we're gonna get them in August, we're gonna get them in January and the following June. Last year, or the five-year graduation rate was at 89%. So typically, you see a 1%, 2% increase, you know, we were upwards of 89, so a 3% increase from last year. So the question of why did it dip a little bit? So when you think about our cohort and how they calculate it, 10 students essentially impacted roughly 4% overall. And you know, last year, we had three students earn skills and achievement commencement credentials. So those are students that are not on track when they enter high school to receive a Regents diploma. They receive this credential, and they do impact your graduation rate. The last time that happened in terms of three individuals, roughly 1%, was 2000 and, well, six years ago. We had two students that transferred into Hyde Park the past two years that never entered the building. They registered, we created schedules, we started to work with them, but they never, they never made it through the doors. You know, we continued to try and work with them and work with them, but we never got them into the building. In addition, we had two students that enrolled from outside of the district that were seniors but were not on track to graduate. So when they enrolled, they were behind grade level also. And then lastly, we had three students that re-entered from out-of-district placements that were also behind grade level within this cohort. So that's 10 students right there, and that's roughly about 4% that impacts the graduation rate. But again, those are the things that we deal with on a yearly basis, and those are the things that we navigate day in and day out. So moving on. This slide talks about what makes FDR a family. I apologize, a little bit of the formatting is off on that, but it's broken into three columns, and it's clubs and activities, staff, guidance, and PTSA supports and events, and then fine and performing arts, athletics, students, and staff recognition. By far, if there's one thing that I take away, it's these pictures up here, that's what makes FDR a great place to be, great place to work, great place to attend high school. Starting in our left column, just clubs and organizations, events that we have, so we have 20 clubs, alright? And those 20 clubs have just under 500 students that they touch with, that's the roster, okay? So a lot of opportunities for kids to get involved, and nearly 500 students in FDR take advantage of being part of those clubs. What you see pictured up there is our pep rally and our homecoming dance, that's organized by our student government. You know, they work through everything, they organize it, they run it, and they do a phenomenal job at it. Talk a little bit about some of our other clubs that we have, sources of strength, you know, just around 60 students involved in that. They run campaigns all year just to make people feel welcomed here at FDR. September, they focused on suicide prevention. They organized a game day and healthy activities. In December, they did a campaign called Snowing Strength. They brought in a photo booth, they were able to write down what their strengths were, post them around the building or in the main lobby. They created a video about kids not reaching that breaking point with respect to mental health struggles and substance abuse. Just yesterday, they had a mindful walk where students gathered and they were able to walk the track after school and just focus on healthy activities. Next month coming up, we have Chalk the Walk. So sources of strength, students are gonna go out, and they're gonna write positive messages on the sidewalks as students will read over a couple of weeks as they come into the building. Other great organizations, multicultural club, step team, they work together jointly for our annual Black History Month celebration. Varsity Club, you know, represented by Ms. Goodman and our PTSA and student government, they worked together to organize a formal dress wear event. Other clubs are Academic World Quest, FDR Live, SAD, Ski Club, all things that come together to just make students feel at home and involved. Moving to our middle column, we have staff guidance and PTSA supports. So that first picture is, we organized, or Miss, our music program organized a Veterans' Day Assembly, and we were able to invite veterans in from the community, family members that were veterans. We were able to celebrate veterans within our own staff, where our band, orchestra, and our choir got together and were able to perform for them. And Mr. Voitek, former service member, was able to get up and just speak a little bit about what's it mean to be a veteran. Algebra II honors classes, visited all elementary schools and read 4th and 5th grade books. Our STEAM Fair organized by Ms. Niesel, that's a district-wide event, happens right in this room. We had 56 student volunteers from FDR come and support younger kids coming in and getting them involved in science. College Application Week, you see pictured up in the middle there, four students applying towards College Application Week. We had 203 students participate in that week, and over 90 students were accepted into DCC instantaneously. They set up camp in the library, our counselors set up camp in the library, they invite students in over the course of the week, they go through filling out college applications, and a lot of times, there is instant admissions that happen right there. So a great event that they organized. They also organized the College Information Night, FAFSA. We had a college fair with over 20 colleges come directly into this room the day before Thanksgiving break. They set up, and we allow our students to come down, walk around the room, talk with college reps, and have conversations with them. And then we also had our countywide skilled trades fair. You know, we were able to do that again this year, again, another great event that brings the community into FDR, something that we like and we hope to continue to do, kind of make this building and FDR the hub of that event. We had 50 vendors for that, so again, just a great component. PTSA, that's our last flyer up there, and I'm gonna put a plug in for our PTSA members. If you're not a member, always think about joining. They partnered with the Winter Circle Project, right? And the Winter Circle Project, they've also created a club, an automotive club. They're coming together and they're organizing a car show for May 17th, gonna be happening right here at FDR. Again, it's gonna be another great event. We encourage everybody to come out and just see what that program's been doing, see what the cars look like, and again, we're inviting other cars obviously in for that evening as well. Moving over to the right, we have fine and performing arts. First, what we have in person, all artwork displayed from Mr. Braz's class. Our students come together, it's just something we love to bring it down and highlight it for them. So you know, we get to do that every year, and that's something we're gonna continue to do, because you can see we have exceptional artists here at FDR. Our first picture that we have up there is our Fall Drama, highlighting that, and also we have our Spring Musical. So Fall Drama was Puffs, 44 students involved in that production. Our Spring Musical, Big Fish, 87 students involved in that production. We had 21 students attend the New York State Theater Education Association Conference. 14 music students selected to perform at Area Allstate. Jason Yang was selected to represent FDR at the NISMAllstate Conference. We had four Gold Key Awards, two Silver Key Scholastic winners. And then moving on to our Scholar-Athlete Teams. So to be a Scholar-Athlete Team, you have to have 75% of the team roster with a GPA higher than 90%. So who'd we have? We had Boys and Girls Cross Country, Boys and Girls Varsity Soccer, Boys and Girls Swim, Boys Golf, Girls Tennis, Girls Volleyball, Girls and Boys Bowling, Boys and Girls Winter Track, Girls Basketball, and then we're gonna jump back, because I never get to highlight the spring sports. Last year's spring sports, 2024, we had Girls Golf, Baseball Softball, and Girls and Boys Track, and also Girls Lacrosse. So again, when you take our Fine and Performing Arts program, you take our athletic program, you take all of our clubs and activities, we're trying to target and make FDR a community that hits and gives opportunities for every student that walks through the door. Another shout-out to our Girls 4x4. So Marina Scott, Leila Rubin, Kendall Moser, Casey DeLisandro earned medals at the Nike Indoor Nationals in New York City, that's one of the middle pictures up there. Also, some other athletes that I just, I have to mention them. Natalia, Conteras, Tejada, Luke Dakin, Troy Spear, Marina Scott, Ike Rothman, all recognized for excellence in their respective sports. We had Moses Sekatawa was named Defensive Player of the Year and appointed to the Allstate Football Team. So again, just all exceptional students that do a fantastic job. Some of our staff recognition that we have, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Moore was named New York State Master Counselor, that's one of 52 in the state. We had Ms. Vicolo and Ms. Curcio receive Collaborators of Excellence Award that was presented by the New York State English Council. So not only do our students doing great things, but our staff's doing great things as well. And then lastly, up here on our last picture is the 2024 College Board National Recognition. So we have Adam Birchwood, Alice Chen, Thomas Hurley, Roman Pemberton, Tegan Rigata, and Jason Yang, all being recognized at the College Board level. And I had already spoken before about our Avid program, so again, all things that are just fantastic that's happening here at FDR. Next, we have Regents Examination Passing Rates. So probably the most exciting slide going to not the most exciting slide, 2017 and 2019. So we're gonna start on the left, and we'll make our way across the chart up here. What can you see about those examination scores? So we had steady and consistent improvement with all students and Gen Ed students for those years. It skips from 2019 to 2021 because Regents examinations were canceled, or you were able to earn exemptions, and that was per New York State, and that was because of our shutdown. Two things I also want to note, you'll see a two-year math and a two-year science up there as well. So this is a cohort data for those examinations, so they specifically speak to algebra and living environment, so that takes into consideration some students that take that examination that are in 8th grade, but also some students that take that examination that are in 10th grade as well. So we model it as a cohort model, just to keep it consistent with our other three, Global US History and ELA. And again, all five of these are required for New York State graduation. Next, just to explain a little bit, you have in 2021, 2022, and then 22 and 23, you have two numbers in each one of those boxes, those are without appeals and then with appeals. So the without appeals, that is your base score, these are 65% or higher on the examinations. And then with appeals, you had, again, per New York State regulations, students that earned a passing score in the class and then scored between a 50 and a 64. So that's why you'll see two numbers in those columns. What I want to specifically highlight though is again, last year's exams. So first, start off just talking about global and ELA. You see passing rates of 82% for all students, 85 for Gen Ed students, 82% for ELA and 85 for Gen, or 93 for Gen Ed students. So again, on track, even a little higher than what we were seeing years prior, even with the, you know, without the appeals. So a comparable number, that's just straight off of the 65% passing rate. Some areas that we have to focus on, US History, there's an asterisk next to US History because that was a new examination last year. Years prior, we only had one administration of the old examination in 21, 22, that school year, that examination was canceled completely by the state, so no one had an opportunity to take that exam. Come back the following year, they take now what would be the older examination, and last year was the first administration statewide, and you'll see the 73 and 76%. So what are we doing to address that and get those numbers up? Our directors, you know, they have an item analysis of each one of those examinations, they're bringing them into their directors' meetings, they're meeting with the staff, the staff's able to go through and, excuse me, and look and analyze each one of the questions, see where their strengths are, where their areas of improvement need to be, and then refine and refocus their instruction to target what that examination is looking for through the state. Two other areas where we want to see improvement over the next couple of years, you know, we have living environment that's at 64%, and we have algebra that's at 40%. So what are we doing to address those right now? So Ms. Niesel is working with the math department, she's brought in a program called Magma Math, that's a program that gives students instantaneous feedback, and so they're working and they're integrating that into the curriculum. They've been doing that over the course of this year. So again, more instructional support, not only for the students instantaneously, but instructional support for the staff as well, so they could work more efficiently. Another component that myself, Ms. Turner, Mr. Cowan, and Ms. Niesel looked at was an Einstein Program. This was a virtual learning program that we were able to bring in, starting in the beginning of the year, focused on Regents prep, targeting, you know, the students from last year, we got them into that program right away. We wanted to focus on working with a smaller cohort upfront, and we've been providing them support through the Einstein Program over the course of the year, and that's gonna continue into June. Some additional things that we did, and I think one of the most important things, is we were able to increase the number of Regents prep programs and offerings after school. So typically, in a year, we would offer six Regents prep sessions for each one of these exams and the other exams. For these five exams right now, we've upped that to 12 sessions. It's been going on for, you know, a little over a month right now, and I could tell you that our in-person Algebra I Regents prep, moving forward, we're looking at a bigger room, because we have a lot of kids going to that, getting support, and looking to improve their scores overall. Our next slide, three areas of opportunity. So what you see on this slide, it talks about mastery levels, it talks about attendance, and it talks about discipline or number of suspensions, all again geared at FDR. So mastery, when you look at this, you break it down, you'll see the two columns, Algebra I, it starts off with, and it runs through ELA, and that's a mastery level of five. So what is mastery per New York State? It's an 85% or higher. And then you have the one right below it, mastery level four, again, same thing, 85% or higher. It's just that living environment, Earth Science, Chemistry, and Physics, those exams are still working off of older exams, and they just haven't caught up with the level five and actually living environment and Earth Science, so it'll be getting caught up this year, because there are new administrations coming up. So essentially, what do we want to see? We want to focus on improving our mastery level. When we focus on improving our mastery level, we're gonna see an improvement on the slide prior. You focus and target and get students to perform at 85% or higher, you're hitting those key instructional programs that you need, and that's gonna bring the whole entire program up. That's my belief, that's why focusing at mastery is a very important thing for me. And you can see our ranges, 3% to 37%. That 3% was US History. So again, something that we had to graduate, or we had a passing rate of, you know, mid 70s in that exam for all students, but only 3% at mastery. So that's an area that every one of our US History teachers is looking at and saying they, they want improvement in that area, and when they hit that, it's gonna bring that score up drastically. And when they hit that, it's going to bring that score up drastically, I believe. And then a range of twelve to twenty-nine percent for living environment, Earth Science, Chemistry, and Physics. Moving down to daily attendance, something that we've talked about, probably at every single board meeting, we've talked about it at admin meetings, we consistently speak about it at our, you know, FDR admin meetings, debriefs that we have weekly. Ms. Weiss has been working predominantly with attendance. And what you can see on the slide up here, last year, it runs through zero to four percent, five to nine percent, and then ten percent. So ten percent is your chronically absent students. That's missing ten percent of the school year or more, eighteen days. Where were we last year? At the end of the year, we're at twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight point eight. All right? So that's a red flag for us. That's not an area that we want to be in. So we said we have to target this, we have to focus on it, and it became a district goal, but also a building goal that our BLT was looking at. So I'll speak a little bit more about what we've been doing with attendance. I'll just give you some of the numbers, you know, right now. Where we're at, based off of this year, like within two weeks ago, there is, has been an improvement. Obviously, we always want to push and see more improvement, but right now, we're looking at fifty-two percent of our students thus far, between zero and four percent. About roughly twenty-three, twenty-four percent of our students are between five and nine percent, so that's the trending area. And then twenty-four percent is chronically absent. So now, is there an ability to reduce that number of twenty-four percent? Yes, there is. We still have some time left. We've made some, we've looked at the data continuously. We've had to make some adjustments to make sure that our data is accurate. And we also, you know, are just continuing to have meetings and meetings, and I'm getting into actually the goals that we looked at before. So I'm going to pause, and I'll save that for a little bit. But where we're at is roughly twenty-four percent for chronic absenteeism thus far this year. And again, I'm hoping we finish out the year either below that or at that as our peak. Lastly, we have a decrease in the number of suspensions. So we've had a decrease from last year, but we still want to see a decrease moving forward. So three point three percent of our students account for nearly seventy percent of our suspensions, and that's in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. So what's that mean? It's thirty-eight students that we are working with, and the APs are working it with, myself, the counselors, social workers, school psychologists are working with, really to support them, to find programs, to find connections for them in this building, to really improve that social-emotional well-being for those students. What I take away from that last mark is three point three percent, thirty-eight students, sixty-nine percent of our suspensions. When you take the numbers as a total, ninety-one point seven percent of our students haven't had an issue. You know, that doesn't reach that level. So nearly ninety-two percent of our students walk through the doors every single day and just have no problem. They're model citizens, they handle their business, they come here to learn, they come here to promote positivity across the board. And obviously, we want to see that number go up, but again, I just have to highlight, ninety-two percent of our students, day in and day out, are doing great things. So goal implementation. So this goal right here, it's Goal One for us, it's under priority Area One. Plan and analyze scheduling options for collaboration between educators and create expectations for successful collaboration. So this is one of the three goals that our BLT identified to work on for this year. This speaks to, it was last year's goal as well. This came from the continuous school improvement framework that we've been working on for a few years now. All of our goals have come from that. That work started two years ago with Dr. Bernhardt and Dr. Geis. And what did FDR identify? It identified that we don't have any collaboration time in the district, within FDR, so we needed to focus on collaboration time. So last year, we met with Dr. Reddick, and Dr. Reddick really explained to us, walked our BLT through it, walked our staff through it, and said, if you're going to want to implement collaboration time, you really have to take a look at the master schedule. It was a joint effort from BLT and the overall staff, the whole staff here at FDR, and we wanted to shift and move towards a community lunch. So what that model would look like would be an eight-period day, but after period four, we would freeze. Everybody would have lunch together. After lunch, we would shift back into, again, period five through period eight. You're going to get a lot more than just collaboration time out of that model. I think it's going to help in terms of discipline, it's going to help in terms of instructional practice. You know, it's just talking about the concept of free play and what research is saying, what kids need and stuff like that. It's an opportunity for students to interact with one another as a whole. So it, you get a lot out of it. I had a lofty goal, and I said, all right, I'm definitely, we want to implement this, not this year, but the following year. What I quickly learned is when you move into something like this, it impacts just a lot more than the classroom. So what we had to do this year is we've been working with food services, we've been working with facilities and operations, we've been working with its impact on the budget, identifying, okay, where would we need support, if we would need new staff for this, what would actually happen when we actually put all of this on paper and look at it. And quickly, we realized, okay, this is a daunting task that we truly, really have to take a deeper dive into. And really, the big impact really is with food service and just the structure of our kitchen right now, and that's what we identified, and so that's what we're working through. Also, what the BLT did, because that was a lot of that work, was done among the administrators. So what our BLT did to keep them moving forward with this goal was, once we establish collaborative times, what's that collaboration look like? So our BLT was charged with setting a set of standard of norms, not only for teachers, but for the administrators as well. We wanted to have everything mapped out, so when we move in this direction, it can be a smooth transition. So where are we at right now? We just had meetings, you know, I sat down with Dr. Roman, Food Services, and we had discussions about that, sat down with facilities and said, okay, what's this look like? What would next steps be like? How do we try and move in this direction? We do know it's going to take some time, but we're not going to lose sight of this goal. And so what's going to come next is just additional conversations with Food Services, additional conversations with the Business Department to say, okay, how do we make this work? Our next goal, this focuses on attendance. So, you know, what do we want to do? You saw the numbers before, okay? We saw a decrease. We went from twenty-eight percent to roughly twenty-four percent in terms of chronically absent. So where did we start? We started last year with analyzing our policy, analyzing other policies around the county, and we wanted to shift into what's the practice at FDR. So getting a set of, again, norms and establishing a system for communication across the board with attendance respectively. So we started out really focusing on what's communication look like, and how are we communicating? When are we communicating? Who's communicating? And again, Ms. Weiss has been leading the charge with that. She's been doing an exceptional job. In addition, she's holding weekly attendance meetings. The idea there is to look at, analyze our attendance weekly, identify if students come off of our chronic absenteeism list, if they're students that are trending towards it, and then work with the counselors, work with the support staff that we have to implement plans for those students, to try and get them so they're not trending and moving towards chronic absenteeism. So again, the big part of the beginning of this year was about communication. If we had an assembly, you heard about attendance. Parent squares went out district-wide about attendance. A lot of communication from staff, a lot of communication through our attendance office. What did we learn? Okay? We were, it was improving slightly, but we said, okay, we have to shift, we have to pivot a little bit. So we wanted to pivot more towards a positive approach, and we wanted to start looking at, how do we highlight students, you know, that zero to four percent that are at ninety-five percent attendance and above? How do we highlight them? How do we celebrate them? You know, North Park has been doing a fantastic job of that. So Ms. Weiss went down there, spoke to Ms. DeLisandro and said, okay, what are you doing? Walked around, said, what's going on? Brought that back to us. We talked about it. We said, how do we shift and model this at a high school setting? How can we target nine through twelve in this model? Do we have all the details ironed out, and is it perfect yet? No, it's not. We're still working towards it. This is going to be, again, another goal that you're going to continue to see at FDR. It's kind of like steering that cruise ship. It's going to take us a while, but we're going to keep working towards it. Who's been leading the charge, again, through that positive message, has been our PBIS group, and, you know, so they're going in the classrooms, they're highlighting classrooms that do have exceptional attendance. You know, Ms. Weiss is highlighting students with exceptional attendance, but we're really trying to figure out, how do we celebrate everybody without saying, okay, we're going to do a pizza party for six hundred kids? So that's where we're at right now, because it's six hundred that are, you know, here, day in and day out. And so how do we celebrate them, really, is kind of the, what we're wrapping our brains Next, we have our third goal, interpret and analyze data utilizing the continuous school improvement framework to inform decision-making with respect to instructional practices. So this is our analysis and reflection goal. This uses our EFF model, you know, it focuses in on what we're doing on those SPL days, and then how does that connecting to our faculty meetings, how's it connecting to, again, BLT, kind of like the, what I would say, the backbone of, all right, this is what we're doing, but how do we know what we're doing is working? This is kind of that framework that we use. So some of the things that we've done and we've brought back to BLT to look at is, first, EAB attendance framework. That was during our first SPL day. So we brought all of our staff in together. It was really all about, okay, who do we have in our building, student-wise? The staff going through the entire roster and saying, who do we have strong relationships with? Who do we know? And there was a framework that we followed. And what did we find? You know, seniors, good portion of the seniors, a lot of our staff absolutely had them in class, had positive relationships with them, can talk to them. Saw, you know, a little less with juniors, a little less with sophomores, not atypical to see. With our freshmen, it was so early in the year, large list of freshmen that we just didn't know yet. But what it provided us was a starting point to say, these are the groups of students that we have to focus on. And by focusing on them, we were hoping to build positive relationships and drawing a connection, you know, a community, so to speak, here in the building. Next, we went and we used our true framework in December, and we looked at our perceptual data. We went through, we analyzed it, we looked at what the community thought, the staff thought, and what the students thought. You know, we found common trends over the last two years within that day and that analysis. Our next two days, our days in February and April, we looked at instructional practices that we had had professional development on before. So we looked at WICER, which is through our Avid program, Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. We revisited that. We revisited what AI looks like in the classroom. You know, Ms. Moy brought in having a silent conversation. I got that right? Silent conversation? Having a silent conversation and what that would look like in the classroom, QFTs. So spent a day just going over all of that stuff and pulling that PD that we had in the past back to the forefront for us and just revitalizing it. And then our last day, we looked at our social-emotional learning program. We learned about Second Step. Second Step is something that we have, you know, K-8, when we went to implement Second Step and it was chosen, they didn't have a high school model. They do have a high school model now. We've looked at that high school model, and we look to implement that next year. So we spent some time working with the website, getting staff signed up on an experimental trial, so they can navigate the website, looking at the lesson plans, and just getting used to the language around Second Step. Within this goal, we pivoted a little because of legislation, conversations around cellphones, and what's that look like at New York State? You know, so nothing official yet. You know, we're all kind of guessing a little bit, you know, we're suspecting, okay, we're looking at maybe potentially a cellphone ban. So what does that look like? So the BLT, we read the book Anxious Generation by Jonathan Hatt, fantastic book, just eye-opening. So we educated ourselves on that, and we started looking at other policies within other districts and what they look like. We're having discussions around that to hope that we can bring that back to our all-admin meetings and have discussions, so we can have a plan put together in the event that it does come down and we're required to move forward with some form of cellphone ban, so to speak. Lastly, it's just a review of Goal One, Two, and Three. And what I want to highlight is what is actually highlighted on the screen. So for Goal One, we're going to continue to meet with Food Services and the Business Office and Facilities to say, okay, how are we moving forward with this goal? When we look at Goal Two, School Culture and Climate, we want to still identify ways to celebrate positive attendance, and then we want to continue to analyze and review our data. And then lastly, Three, we're going to still continue to talk about goals for next year, what that looks like. How do we modify these goals to bring them forward and move them to the next level? And then also, finish out our book study, finish out reviewing every model that we can for that, again, so we can educate ourselves, and I can bring that information back to our all-admin team. With that being said, any questions?
A question on the math score. It dropped so dramatically. Maybe I missed it, but was there a reason for the drop so dramatically?
So we were, across the state and the nation, we're seeing drops in math scores across the board, but within New York State, the drop, we believe, was just the, it was the change in the examination. So the average dropped drastically across the state. Yeah, there's no excuse, it shouldn't be where it is. You know, that's something that, again, we're looking to improve.
And how did that compare to, like, state averages?
Sixty percent.
Sixty?
Was the state average.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
And that's why we're implementing, we're looking at a couple of different things. Obviously, we quickly said, all right, what we're doing is not working, we got to look at something else, and we got to implement new things to get those scores up.
I have a question. So for the attendance, have we seen improvement? Like, if you look at it, have we seen improvement?
Yeah, so right now, we're at a four percent improvement rate from last year. I don't want to say that's where we'll be at the end, because last year's rate is based off of one hundred and eighty days. This rate's based off of about one hundred and, I want to say seventeen, I think, is when I extracted the numbers, maybe a hundred, a little higher, maybe. So, you know, again, we have seen improvement, a little bit, four percent at this point.
Yeah, because I remember we had, like, different strategies of working towards getting, like, attendance higher. Like, at one point, the beginning of the year, we tried more of, like, when people came in. But I'm just curious if we're focusing, like, directly on people who are more missing class and multiple days rather than a couple minutes? Like, I know, like, some people, like, run really late, especially seniors, like, and they miss a couple of class, like, class time and minutes because, say, like, a class is all the way in the back of the school. So I'm just curious, like, if we're focusing a little bit more on people who are, like, not really here, like, multiple days rather than, like, those couple minutes that, you know, you wake up late or something.
Absolutely. And we have to focus on all of it, because if by focusing on all of it, it's a cultural shift, okay? So what are we doing? Yes, we're absolutely focusing on the students that would be chronically absent. Majority of the students that are walking through the door a few minutes late are not chronically absent, but they got to be on time. So we are going to focus on that. What are we doing with students that are chronically absent? We're really trying to tailor it to individual plans for those students. You know, sometimes it's just, you know, phone conversations with the family to say, what's happening? What's going on? How can we support you? Sometimes it's extensive as a home visit, okay? What I would say, I didn't mention it before, the communication piece is pivotal in this. And, you know, when you look at chronic absenteeism, it's a focus on unexcused absences and excused absences. So, you know, excused absences per board policy, it's what we can grant. You know, of our excused, of our chronically absent students, again, that twenty-four percent, seventy families, so nearly six percent of that, have communicated with us and said, these are the reasons why we're going to be out. You know, but we still have to count it as absent because they're not in the building, even though it's excused.
Thank you. And I also do think that, like, the positive reinforcement does work, because I know a lot of, like, our classmates are like, oh, we get candy today, because we actually have attendance. So I do think that does work. But yeah, no, I would. have attendance. So I do think that does work. But yeah, no, I would, I would definitely, even myself, I would think of something else, like to encourage people more to come because the candy does work, even for like older kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm looking at slide four. That's the one that I'm still struggling with, the graduation rates. And I had a lot of questions and you answered a lot of them. So thank you. You know, and you said, I think you said like 92% of our, of the kids in this building are coming to school and doing what they need to do, which I love that we're focusing on what they're doing. But we're still at 81%. And I, I mean, I'm stating the obvious, but I, what, and it's clear that you're looking at all the data and the reasons. I'm worried about that 19% over time. You explained like 10 of the students. What do you see? What do we do? I mean, we're still at 81%. I was, while I was happy that we were 86 last, the year before, and to go down that far is a little discouraging, looking at all the efforts that are going in. So are you seeing, you said you contact families, you get information. Are you seeing, I mean, it's probably hard to pinpoint, but I just, how do we get that 81 moving in the opposite direction?
So I would say it goes, it goes to the triangle on the right, right, to like an MTSS component. So when we were talking about, it's multiple factors. So what do we do each year? You know, we look at the number of students, again, that didn't graduate. And it's one thing to look at the statistics on, in a slide or, you know, that get reported, but we have to go through and we have to look at the individual names. And we look at each individual student and we say, what happened? And where did we fall short? Some of the components, again, were, we struggled with attendance and we weren't getting them in. And the plans that we were putting in place just weren't working. And, you know, we kept shifting it, but we just lost them over time. Some of them, you know, we got attendance, some of them, last year it did boil down to either one or two examinations that they didn't pass. So we're focusing on getting them to pass those examinations.
So they're in the five year?
Yes, they're in the five year.
Their numbers are in the five year.
And, and then, you know, lastly, well, not lastly, it's more than that, but I'd say three of the big ones is, again, then we look at credits and how we're scheduling them and saying, okay, how are we either trying to get them back on track after their freshman year? Or what else can we do to make sure that they're at their cohort level with credits? And, and again, I spoke about the, our goal number one with the community lunch. And actually, that's a big priority of it because a lot of our students actually elect not to take a lunch. And so with having that one lunch in there, we truly have a full eight period day to schedule students. And so our hope is that when we shift towards that, we're able to recoup students the following year and then not just in summer school. We want to recoup as much as possible in summer school, but also try and get that extra credit back through that extra period that we have during the day.
See, now I would think that with the extra period, because the students I know that opt not to have a lunch, it's because they want to take an elective. It doesn't fit in their schedule. And if you have a student who is short on credits, does that community lunch take away a period for an opportunity?
No, it adds a period because
It does. Okay. Sorry, I'm not understanding.
I can't, when a student comes in and even if they're behind and they say, well, I want to take a lunch, we're not going to tell them, no, you can't take a lunch. You know, you have to have, we're going to put a lunch in their schedule. So now we're operating on a seven period day. So when we move to this model, we'd be operating on a true eight period day. And then you couple that, again, with if it's sophomore, junior year, and then senior year, you're adding three total credits that you could possibly regain over time.
So I know it's kind of early. You mentioned summer school. Are there any kind of tentative plans for summer school about what we're doing this summer?
Yeah, we are working, you know, towards a summer school program, you know, looking to hire staff for that. We have projections right now. It's still a little early to put anything in stone, but yeah, we definitely are looking at what we can do.
Back to graduation rates for a minute. I think, I think I've said it in this group before that I know we have to look at the four-year graduation rate. That's sort of the standard thing to do. But I'm really most interested in the ultimate graduation rate. And I know that we keep track of them in years five and six. I also know that there's no specific sort of GED program in the high school, but there is at Duchess. And maybe this is asking a lot, but I wonder, do we ever follow students past that sixth year and give them some sort of support and encouragement? You know, I'm thinking about the, I think you said it was like 90 something percent after six years.
Yeah, we were at 89% after five years last year. So after the six years is definitely out there.
And there are a certain fraction of students for whom life circumstances just make it, you know, very, very difficult. It's not, it's not them, it's not you, it's, it's life circumstances. And so that's why I constantly think about the post-six year. And I don't know that if it's even fair to, to ask to keep a track of them. That's what I'm thinking.
What I would say is, have we had students, depending upon age, you know, but, you know, over the course of the 15 years that I've been in district, I can think of, yeah, one or two students that have been here. You know, it's, again, it's not common, but it is something that no matter what, we're going to try and really figure out what's next for them. And, and, you know, I will be honest, sometimes we do look at and we do have conversations with families and say, okay, maybe an HSE is what's best for you right now, given your circumstances, knowing that that is putting you on a better platform, possibly in a couple of years to go back and earn, you know, through night classes or TCC or something like that. Again, it goes back to looking at each individual student. And, you know, that's something that, again, the, all three assistant principals and the counselors do a lot. It's, it's, sometimes we have to make decisions to say, okay, what's best for the student in the time? Might not be, you know, and it might not increase our numbers on, on the screen, but it's what's best for the student, best for the family. And we'll discuss it and we'll make those decisions. And we'll say, okay, let's, let's move forward with this because knowing that it's going to put them on the right path. Welcome.
I just want to chime in and just address a little bit of that question because Mike is being modest, but him and his team have really been working and I want to commend them at finding individual interventions and being proactive with students who are struggling like you're talking about. So through attendance, we've come up with some unique ways of supporting students through our home tutoring. And just recently, Mike and I worked with our BOCs on the virtual learning academy for students who are really struggling, that we know they are academically able to achieve these goals, but are having life impacting circumstances that are preventing them from coming into school. So they are really working at being proactive and thinking out of the box so we can increase those numbers in that four-year goal. So thanks, team.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Right? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 7.3, our budget update with Dr. Roman and Ms. Steinberg.
Good evening, members of the board, our community. So today, we're going to be, once again, going over the budget process. As we began our previous presentations, we rooted and underpin our budget drivers with our strategic plan. And these are the areas that we had highlighted in previous presentations. Currently, we are one meeting away from having the, the final recommendation to the board and the board adopting the budget for the 25-26 school year. Once that's completed, we will be preparing for the May 20th vote at Havlin Middle School from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Currently, we are still waiting for finalized budget. There have been a number of extensions at the legislative level for the budget. So we are waiting anxiously to find out what those, those numbers are.
So just today, the legislature extended the budget again through April 15th, which is just one week before we would ask the board to adopt the property tax report card, which is also the way of the board adopting the budget. So at this point, I would say it's less likely every day that there'll be a budget passed before we have to pass our budget.
So what happens with that? Like?
So we have in our budget, this has happened to us in, in other years too. We have in our budget, the governor's proposal for state aid. We, if we were to receive more state aid in the legislature's budget, then we would actually have more revenues than we were accounting for, and it would be reflected in fund balance at the end of next year. And vice versa, too. If there was a less state aid in the actual legislated budget, then we would have less fund balance than we would otherwise at the end of June 2026.
So we use fund balance to adjust any differences?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to reiterate the key drivers, we're, with this particular budget, we're preserving our programs and services for students and enhancing our programs, continuing to look at efficiencies and how to be more effective in the work that we're doing in the budget proposal. How do we ensure that this is financially stable and the least impact on our taxpayers? And so that leads us to this next slide, which I will highlight that our tax levy increase from the previous year was at 3.61%. And this, the subsequent tax levy increase is 2.43. I'll let Linda speak to some of the specifics on this slide.
Thank you. So the 2.43% is actually the maximum allowable tax levy. That's the amount that we can increase the levy by. The reason we show both years on this slide is that the beginning part, the first step in the tax cap calculation is the prior year's tax levy. So if you look at the first column for 24-25, near the bottom, you'll see the allowable tax levy of 70.8 million. That was last year's maximum amount, well, for the current year, excuse me. We did go to the maximum this year. So our tax levy starting point for 25-26 calculation is the same amount. You'll see that in the first line at the top of the 25-26 column. To calculate the actual allowable increase, there are a number of factors that go into the calculation. The first one shown here is our tax-based growth factor. This is a factor that's unique for every school district. It's dependent, it's actually reflective of the change in real property tax, or real properties in this school district. It doesn't reflect change in assessments, but actually changes in properties. So as new properties are added to our tax rolls, or if there are renovate or adjustments to the actual property itself, it may be reflected here. We also get to, or we should reduce the tax levy by the amount of the pilots that we expect to receive in the next year. You'll notice on this chart that there is quite a change between last year and this year's calculation. That's because we now have two new pilots. Those are payments in lieu of taxes that started this year. The IDA has agreements with their standard pilot agreements with the Bella Field Hotel, which is across the street from the CIA, and also the Saki Brewery, which is in the old supermarket in Hyde Park. So those two pilots started this year and that's caused, that's the cause for the increase. We can't also collect taxes on those properties, so we also can't increase our tax levy amount by that, by, for those properties. And that's why there's adjustment here. And then every year, we do get an exclusion for the capital portion of our tax levy. Quite a few years ago, the board agreed to set the capital tax levy about $1.8 million every year. You'll see that at the bottom of the 25-26 column. Last year, it was a little bit higher because we did have capital levies that came to us through, or capital exclusions that came to us through the BOCs budget. So that's how we get to our increase for next year, our allowable tax levy increase of 1.7 million or 2.43%. So this slide here actually compares the maximum allowable tax cap of 2.43% to what we're actually proposing in the budget. After going through all of the information, we realized that we do have some fund balance that we could utilize to balance the budget. And so the decision was to make a recommendation that our tax levy be set below the tax cap at 2%. So if we do set the tax levy at just 2%, the difference between the maximum tax levy and the amount that we would actually levy is $307,697. In order to have a balanced budget, we would increase the amount of the fund balance appropriation from the 2.9 million to 3.2 million.
So we feel very strongly that we can achieve the key drivers that we had indicated earlier, which is preserving, enhancing our programs, and still keeping in mind the impact on our taxpayers. That's why we are actually coming below the tax cap, or excuse me, the maximum, maximum allowable tax levy below the 2.43 and moving forward with a 2% for the 25-26 school year. This just highlights the past five years. We've gone all the way to the tax cap each and every year, other than the 2019-2020 school year, which we also came below the tax cap during, during that particular year.
So this is the third presentation to the board where the budget, the proposed budget hasn't changed. So I won't spend a lot of time on the next two slides. But overall, our preliminary proposed budget would be 125.9 million. That's a $4.9 million increase or 4.13%. You could notice on the top line that the tax increase would be 2% because we would make the recommendation that we're below the tax levy increase. Also shown here are the other revenues, which really includes interest income, charges to other school districts, and also the BOC surplus refund that we have. Our state aid is broken out into the state aid and the building aid and transportation aid for bus purchases. I broke those two amounts out this year just because the building aid and transportation aid on bus purchases is related to the capital tax levy. And I wanted to show how that appeared in our budget. And again, the expenditure budget is the same as the revenues. We are required to have a balanced budget, and that's what that means, that expenses have to match the revenues. Thank you. So here we have the categories that we normally show the budget, the budget expenses in, the total, again, the 125.9 million, which is a 4.13% increase.
So the board had requested some additional information around the capital outlay. The capital outlay project allows, New York State allows us to go out each year with a $100,000 project. In this particular recommendation, what we're looking to do is have a comprehensive audit of our entire school system in terms of the security cameras. So having an outside perspective on where are our sort of deficiencies, if any, using the data to then design where we need to increase the number of cameras, where do we need to perhaps reallocate or move cameras in certain locations to ensure that all of our schools are covered. Then there will be a phased implementation. And then lastly, is ongoing monitoring and making sure that the system is being leveraged to ensure that we're keeping all of our schools safe. So this project would be encompassing of this, of this project here for the 25-26 school year capital outlay project.
Thank you. The budget must be shown in the budget components listed here. This is a New York State rule. So we have the budget broken down into the program administrative and capital portions. Typically, our admin portion of the budget is around 10%, and the program is usually just right where it is, the 75 to 76%. Capital, the capital portion of the budget actually does vary. Capital includes capital projects, the facilities costs, and also of those capital outlay projects. Because we're showing the percentage in the aggregate, it, the capital variances actually do affect how the admin and the program percentages come through. But again, we are required to show the budget broken down as this. After the board adopts the budget, we release the line-by-line budget. And the line-by-line budget shows which, each account code which area it belongs to, if it's program. if it's program, admin, or capital. So, new for us this year, we actually have two bus propositions. They would be bus, Proposition 2 and Proposition 3. Everything we just talked about was the general fund budget. That's Proposition 1. So, we do have these two bus propositions. We're asking the voters to vote on both of them. This is not a situation where one, where it would be either/or. If both propositions pass, we would buy all of the buses listed here. If just one proposition passed, we would buy the buses listed in that proposition. So, Proposition 2 are the buses that were recommended for replacement by our transportation department. We do have a bus replacement plan that is monitored by our head mechanic and also the transportation supervisor in order for smooth operations. It is time to trade in seven buses. The total cost of those buses that are both, are gasoline or diesel-powered is the $975,075. Hyde Park currently receives 58.4% state aid on bus purchases. So, after receiving state aid, the total cost would be $405,631. The Proposition 3 is for electric-powered buses. When we had our vote in November for the 17 EV buses, we were planning to use 17 EPA grants and nine NYSERTA grants to fund the majority of that project. The EPA grants aren't available to us right now, but the nine NYSERTA grants are still available to the school district. We also learned a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago now, that the state is providing state aid to school districts that use state, state grants on the total gross cost of the buses. So, if we were to purchase these nine buses, the gross cost is 4.5 million. The total of the grants from NYSERTA is 2.3 million. Our bus sales company would actually subtract that from the price that we would pay them. They would be the recipient of the grant, and the district would have to upfront $2.2 million. We would plan to do that with capital reserve funds that we already have. We would not ask to borrow for that. After we buy those buses, we would file for state aid, and we would receive state aid, like I said just a little while ago, on the full amount, the four and a half million, at the 58.4%. As you can see in the calculation, that would actually generate aid more than what our, our actual upfront cost would be. Of course, the state isn't going to pay us to buy buses, so they would aid us at the $2.2 million amount. And after receiving the state aid and the grants, the cost for these nine buses would be nothing to the taxpayers.
These were just the items that were presented by each of our administrators, and this details the requests, what's being funded through the general fund, what's being funded through the Strong Connections Grant. And this is just available so that anyone is able to reference the items that were presented. If you recall, we went through a whole process to prioritize and evaluate each of the items. And so, this outlines those items. And then, in addition to that, toward the bottom half of this chart, you have items that would normally go for, for next year's budget. However, we do have some equipment funds that we will be purchasing these items through this year's current budget.
Thank you. So, the next Board of Ed meeting is on a Tuesday night. It's April 22nd. The reason you're meeting on Tuesday is that's the night that all of the school districts in Dutchess County will vote on the BOCs budget. We also have the adoption of the property tax report card on that agenda. That's basically when the board is accepting the superintendent's recommendation for the budget, and after that, the budget will be set. We are required to hold a budget hearing after the board adopts the budget, and that's scheduled for May 8th. That would be at District Office before the regular board meeting at 6:00 PM. And the school budget vote is scheduled for May 20th at Havilin Middle School from 6:00 to 8, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
I do want to share that we have one budget video that we just featured on our, on our Facebook and also website. It's just Budget 101. The next one is currently being recorded, which will show the taxpayers and our community where the funds are being invested. And then, the last one will be just outlining how our community can, can get engaged in the budget process, from how to locate the documents on the website, to the voting, to early voting. All that information will be provided on the third video.
I'd like to mention, too, that we did release a survey on the budget. It's a very short survey. There's a link on the website. We also sent out a Parrot and Square notification and posted it on Facebook. We will have flyers around the district with a QR code. We're really encouraging our community, all of our staff and our families, to participate in this survey. It'll just give us an idea of how people would like to receive communication about the budget and what their feelings are about the budget information that we presented so far. Thank you.
Just a question on communications. Like, I know in the past, we have a newsletter and the postcard that kind of, had a little bit of a stumble, I think, last year, maybe? Are we all on track with getting that out on time this year?
Yeah, so, last year, we, we were okay last year with the mailing. I think it was, it was a couple of years ago.
Was it a year? Yeah, I don't remember now, but I know we had something where there was a problem with the printing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, I, I was informed about that. So, we, we are ahead of schedule. Currently, we have Mr. Wirt and his team. We have a plan, we have a backup plan. We have some contingencies in the event that we need to have a backup to the, the printing, printing process. But currently, we're working with Capital Region, or, excuse me, Dutchess BOCs to develop the, the budget newsletter, and that, that's going to be forthcoming very soon.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to 8.1. Can I get a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved, Tibbetts.
Second, Christine.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. The board reminds speakers that the public comment portion of our meeting is only one item on a lengthy agenda. This segment of public participation will be limited to an overall time of 21 minutes. We ask that each speaker be concise and that remarks be limited to three minutes. We expect individuals participating in public comment to speak respectfully and courteously, modeling proper civility and decorum for our students. And when you come up, please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay. We will now close public participation. 9.1, Board Subcommittee Reports. Let's see here. We have Professional Development, WP, SBA, Students, Smartphones, and Social Media. Margaret, Katie, Ed, and Christine signed up? Did that happen yet, or? Anyone want to give a summary of that?
Yeah, so, we, it was a webinar. Really informative. They talked, I thought it was going to be more about cell phones, and they did talk about cell phones, but it was a lot about technology in classrooms, the use of technology, the effect on students. And, you know, everybody's questioning, as was discussed before, what we'll do if the state comes through with a cellphone ban. But a lot of it, there was a lot more to it. A lot of the social impact for, for students, how, how you support students, and, and that kind of thing. So, it was, I thought it was good. Christine, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and there was another piece that my takeaway was, if you get rid of the cell phones, you still have these devices in front of every kid all day, every day. So, there was more talk about, it was just technology in general and how it's impacting, you know, our kids now.
Okay. Okay. All right. The next one was Empowering Education Through Technology. Did you go to that one, Ed?
So, I attended that with Jessica Turner. So, we were there at Mount St. Mary's College, which is always nice to go back to. You know, they kind of highlighted the importance, of course, of thinking outside the box in regard to cybersecurity and just planning and understanding now that technology affects every single department. And if you make a decision about technology, how it can have ramifications on your district and then legal ramifications. I don't know if Jessica, you know, if there's anything else you want to add to that.
Thanks. Good job.
All right. And then, some committees that met were DLT?
Yes. Katie was at that as well. We, actually, what was interesting was we watched a video, Right to Read. And, was that the name of it? Yeah, okay. And a lot of conversations about barriers for students. And, what do I want to add to that? Cross-section, there were, it's the first time we've met in a while, the evening, because there's instructional DLT doing work during the day. So, this was kind of a coming together, getting input from stakeholders. There were community members, students, that all watched the movie. And then, we, we looked at where we wanted to go from here based on what we were seeing in the video.
Okay. And then, Dutchess County School Board Association?
So, Dutchess County School Boards Association met on April 3rd. We had a presentation on the Arts in Education co-ser from BOCs, from Maria DeWald, which was very enriching, telling us about some of the services offered through our local BOCs. We talked about student board reps and so forth. I think I shared a little bit about this in the email and what districts are doing. There are some districts in Dutchess County that don't have student board reps, which to me was kind of a little surprising. We've always been blessed with excellent student board reps, obviously, like Elizabeth and so forth. It was kind of interesting in talking about student board reps that some districts, like Dover, they actually have a number of board reps, and they rotate. So, when they have their board meetings at their elementary school or their middle school, they actually have reps from those levels. So, that was kind of a little different. I hadn't heard about that, so it was interesting. We have a couple of different meetings that are coming up that I think I shared with the board. On April 23rd, there's a, a meeting with Senator Mayer of the 37th District. He's the head of the Ed Committee. It's going to be a meeting down in Rockland County. It's a free event. They're going to be talking about things like cellphone policies, e-buses, tax caps, school funding, and the new extreme heating regulations and so forth. That's on April 23rd. Another thing that's coming up is, just announced, was shared by Gully, was on April 21st, Lieutenant Governor Delgado is going to be speaking at Poughkeepsie High School. So, I will share the link for registering if you're interested in that. So, a lot of things going on locally, and Dutchess County School Boards had a lively discussion, as always. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other committee reports?
The Special Education Committee met. The major discussion was just about the, making sure that kids are in the least restrictive environment, and really, the focus on strengthening the ICT classrooms and co-teaching for our students.
Okay. Any other?
Mentioned that I met with four potential student board reps for next year. Two males, two females. They're very enthusiastic, so we'll, I just kind of shared what the responsibilities are, and we'll see once they have their election here. But it was interesting. It was nice to meet them.
When is the election? No? Soon? Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Moving on to Board Discussion Including Consent Agenda Items. So, the, the board member, the board has three seats open this year. Petitions are available on the website, or you can get those at District Office. And they are due back to District Office on April 25th, April 21st by 5:00 PM. Even though there's no school, the office will be open for that. Any consent agenda discussion? All right. So, moving on to 10.1. Can I get a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda? Sorry.
So moved, Christine.
Second, Ed.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to 11.1, Capital Bid Award Correction. Amity Construction Corp., 2022 Phase 3B for Hyde Park, Netherwood, North Park, and District Office.
So moved, Tibbetts.
Second, Christine.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Capital Project Change Order, Phase 2A, Multiple Vendors. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Tibbetts.
I have a second.
Second, Christine.
Any discussion? I do, I do have a question on, on this. So, in the table, there's change order allowance remaining, and it starts at 18,000, you know, and it subtracts. But then, halfway through, it stops. Does that mean we're out of change order allowance? Or, I, I, it's, I don't understand the, the table here, how we, you know, we're going down, and then those two columns just are blank. Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
Well, actually, Tom and Matt and Gregory are all here. They came in case there were questions about the change orders. I'm not sure if they understand the question. I could show you on the chart. Can I meet him at the podium?
Can you guys go to the, sorry, so that people at home can hear?
Sorry. There's still contract allowances left. $8,891.26, but it's split between the general contractor and the electrical contractor. The other allowance for the mechanical had been used, and for the abatement contractor. So, not all dollars are used, and we're processing the last couple of items in the next board meeting, you'll see. And we'll use all those allowance dollars, or get a deduct change order for anything unused.
So, so, does that just suggest this table that we're looking at is not correct?
No. No, no, it's correct. Well...
How come the number just...
I didn't create, I didn't create that, so I can't speak to it.
The number, the number just disappeared. Well, that's what I'm wondering, if it's a mistake in the table.
I would have, I would have to check what the, what the clerical person that does this, but the chart would show the contract allowance or the remaining allowance for each contractor.
Okay. Because normally, what we see is...
It's not like a running total.
Like, the running total of what's left as a change order is either positive or negative, and it comes back. So, so, we still have allowance left per contract?
You have a little bit left.
Okay.
You definitely have a little bit left.
Nothing to worry about, right? We're still...
Well, we're going to get, we're going to go over it in the end. There are going to be a deduct on some contracts and then adds in addition to the contracts.
Yep.
So, we will, we'll go over, but we'll be well within our contingency.
Okay.
So, we have our, our project. We have our allowances built into the project.
That's what I'm wondering, if we're already at contingency?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Nope. We won't, we won't exceed the contingency. No.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this? Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to 11.3, Capital Project Change Orders for Phase 3, 2B, just 2B, 35.7 million for Havilin and Ralph R. Can I get a motion? In a second. In a second?
Sure. So moved, Tibbetts.
Second, Christine.
All right, any discussion on this one? I don't have any. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to 12.1, can I get a motion to enter our second public participation?
So moved, Christine.
Add a second?
Second, Ed.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Same rules apply, but this one is limited to 12 minutes total. Would anyone like to address the board? All right, well, we'll close public participation. Any other matters deemed necessary by the board? Okay, we don't need a second executive session, so can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved, Ed.
Second, Christine.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.